Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the order, the October thirteenth, Parks and Recreation Committee. Could we have the roll call, please?
All right. George?
Yep.
Genevieve? Ritu? Katie? Mike Kelly?
Present.
Jamie? Mike LeBlanc? Toby?
Present.
Bill?
Here.
Renee? Dan? John Pelkey? And Molly's here. John is not. He and Erica.
Do we have a quorum? Okay. The chair would enter a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Public input, is anyone public input today? Seeing none, we'll move on. Reportedly, council liaison Erica.
Thank you. Not much to report as far as the council. I did want to say-
Erica, can you get closer to the mic, please?
I did want to say, I should be, I should be used to this by now, right? So, not much information to share as far as the council, unless you have specific questions. We were excited at the two meetings ago to learn about the start of the Hockey Deck Pickleball Court at Ry Street. That that's in the works, so everyone was really excited about that and seeing that going underway, so, thank you.
Any questions for Erica? Okay, moving on. Report of the Board of Education, I do not see Mr. Arducci here. I will reach out to him. He said he's only missed once, but we haven't seen him for a while, so I'll reach out to Art. Has anyone heard from Art? Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to him. Special reports task force-
Toby, should we request another individual? I don't know if he's ever attended.
I don't recall that either, but.
We should request somebody else.
At this point, you're looking at your last meeting before the new election. So, probably would be, you know, with the new cycle, they may appoint someone new. But it probably would be a good point to just kind of mention that you really want someone attending, but that's a good point.
Thank you.
Who do we make that request to?
I can, I can talk to the board chair for you and mention it.
Okay, thank you, Erica. Special task force, that's usually John's report, isn't it? Special projects, tasks, capital projects. Is there a report on that, Molly?
I'm gonna hold this down. All right, so on page I'm having a hard time with this. On page two of the director's report, on the top of it, we put down some of the capital projects that were discussed within the master plan as we are starting to look into our capital projects for the next fiscal year. With that being said, we put down some of the capital projects that were not yet completed in our master plan. Along with, we added the possibility of doing post-engine concrete in boards for deck hockey, as right now, if we complete the deck hockey with the funds that we were given for this current fiscal year, we won't be able to do post-engine concrete as it's gone up like double in price over the last six months. And some of the boards for deck hockey, depending on the material, has also gone up. So, we're kind of looking into, either looking for additional funding for deck hockey, or kind of not using a material that would last as long as we were expecting, which is unfortunate, but that's the way that kind of the economy is going right now with materials, so. But we kind of wanted to start the discussion with everyone in the commission to see what the priorities would be for the next fiscal year.
Any questions for Molly?
Oh, you're looking for that, for us to discuss that now? Okay. And is it out of these, you're trying to prioritize these five?
Correct, yeah. So, I will, I will add with the permanent storage facility, they did the design in 2021. Like, I don't know, they approved it. And we're kind of working with Public Works now, as that will be storage for them. So, that one, we are in the works of, and I'm not sure if additional funding will come through as well within Public Works.
How much are we looking for?
For the storage facility?
Yes.
We have not come up with a set price for it. I would say a million almost, to construct a storage space for the size that we need to stop renting at Edwin Road.
Molly, I thought last time we met, this looks like the order we actually put it in. Am I wrong, or am I?
I honestly just typed it out as I saw it, so that is potentially the order that you put it in.
I think that's the way we had it set up last, last time we talked about it. Well, it's probably cheap.
Remember that?
Yeah.
For some reason, I thought the storage was.
Okay, thanks, Gary. So, you think that the order justice, everything is right except deck hockey was number one?
I can't remember exactly, but this particular one is a specific.
We wanted to see what the commission wanted to do in terms of priorities, if priorities have shifted with the year.
Yeah, from the last meeting, though, you're right, the pickleball was, was the next one up.
There's only thing is, and I apologize for not knowing the cost and our schedule for these five. I think that would help us understand which one to pick.
Yep, we can refer to the master plan. We can print out the master plan pages on that as well. We can provide that for everyone. With this, the disc golf course would be the relatively cheapest option on this list. As utilities will be fairly expensive, we're in the middle of pricing it out. We're getting updated costs of all electricity over at the John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds.
Did I hear, I thought I heard a rumor something about Willowbrook becoming a disc golf. Did anybody hear that?
We talked about that, God, it seems like a long time ago, though. That was when, that was over a year ago. I think we're talking about the possibility of the options for.
That might have been at a time when we were still discussing if Willowbrook was going to become a town property, and there hasn't been much discussion about that lately. And the third item listed, like, that would be what was previously the first, but kind of what is underfunded, right? So, that would kind of, these are kind of out of that.
Well, the cost is going up because of the concrete stuff, so what I'd like to see, if possible, is usually in the long run, it's worth spending the more money to get the higher quality last long, so I'd like to see some numbers against that. I think, I'm sure that'd help the commissioners as well, to look at, you know, pros and cons, where we can spend this much now and get it for this long, but spend however much more and have a longer range plan, because obviously, we don't want to make decisions that put us behind the barrel every, every three years.
Correct, yeah. At this point, the difference between the post-engine concrete and the other concrete we're looking at, it was really only about a 10% difference, so I can get the updated quotes. It was just the amount that we had to lay down, right, between the pickleball and the deck hockey, so right now, looking at the project, we could afford it with just pickleball for post-engine. And obviously, we would prefer to do the same surface for both.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
So, we're talking about a strategic pause because of the cost of construction? And take on something cheaper, and what kind of timeframe are we talking about to relook at that, so that we can?
So, we're, we're planning on finishing construction, so that way, we can open up late spring. At this point, it's getting too cold with the weather, but we already finished demolition. So, we've been doing that. We finished our first round of design for the pickleball and deck hockey. And we're just in the middle of pricing out different things, and we plan to go on out to RFP as soon as possible for it.
Because of the popularity of that activity, is it possible that we can go to the town, to the citizens for some private funding?
It's possible, especially for like the boards for deck hockey in terms of like sponsorships and such. Like a traditional hockey arena, right, having different advertisements out on the board, so that is a possibility that we have discussed. And I think it might be a good idea to try to get some more community outreach, even if it's like murals, people painting.
Contact the pickleball folks and say, have you guys chip in, you know, 15 bucks a person? I don't know. I know, I know we're not talking that kind of money, but.
I think Molly has a good point, like, when you watch a pro hockey game, even the pros have, each board might be dedicated to a certain business that they pay some sort of fee. So, it's not, and it'll be a lot more than 15 dollars. I'm sure it'd be like more like a $500 per board, you know? But we may get some interest in town to advertise.
Yeah, I think it might be a good way to do it, and we could also figure out some community groups that might do it, even if it's a lower cost for the community groups, whether, again, it could be a mural or other pictures and advertisements. It's a good way to get the community involved. That's just a thought that I've had since looking at all the different companies and the cost for the boards. They're insane right now, so. Without sponsorships, I don't think it would be as high of quality.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question.
With regard to the disc golf at Lawrence Road, Lawrence Road neighborhood has always been somewhat resistant to us doing much in that area, so do we have buy-in from the neighborhood to put in a disc golf, or are we gonna?
We would have to get buy-in for that location. It was just kind of a potential where we could put it. There are different spots around the town that we could put in the disc golf course. However, Lawrence Road Park doesn't have anything at the moment. And it is a pretty flat landscape and open, so it would be nice.
Yeah, and you could also, like, the T-boxes, if you go to Wickham, their sponsors on all the T-boxes, they usually have signs for those, so that, that's another potential also. Did you, Molly, did you have a cost for the lights at the skate park at all?
We haven't gotten updated quotes in the last couple of years. The, the quotes, when we were looking at the master plan, are not accurate anymore because of COVID, so those are all things that need to be updated.
Is there any way to piggyback a light off of the back end of, of the fields up there?
So, that's a discussion, and then there's the light that goes into the parking lot that we think we can piggyback off of for one side of it as well. You can't really tell on the black and white photos. But there's like some photos in the corner, you can see the, the lights almost, but there's one light pole that I think you can piggyback off of, and it will shine on a big part of it. I do think it would be a good priority to focus on at some point about the lights of the skate park, because we have seen some vandalism recently in our park. Pretty much all around the playground, so I think that would also provide a little bit more security in that sense.
And even safety.
Right.
Any more questions with regard to special projects? Okay, George, talk to us about the open space.
The only thing we reviewed was the 124 Brookfield Street, which is the Willowbrook Golf Course. It was overwhelming for the town, if it, if the cost is there to purchase it. I think it's eight, hold on, I don't know the exact, it's 85 acres. And includes a clubhouse, the driving range, and parking lot area. I mean, the potential not to do golf so much, and I don't know if, I got an email from John Caldwell that he sent to Open Space. I mean, it's a good possibility to, at some point, the rec department, you guys are probably gonna get booted out of Whopping. It would be a nice thing to have that designed for park and rec. I mean, you'd have walking, you already have paved trails, you could do, there's a potential for disc golf there, or soccer golf. I mean, there's a lot of potential for that space. Not so much to bring it back to a golf course, but just for the town to get. I mean, the cost is gonna be there, but it's a great piece of property. It's probably the best property that's come up for the town to purchase since I've been on the open space or the park and rec.
Yeah, in terms of recreation, I mean, looking at that, there is like the snow shoeing, hiking, biking, and it's paved, it's in great condition in terms of the pavement for all the trails. And there's opportunity to do small, extreme activities and outdoor education out throughout there because of the difference in they kind of, so they have about 85 acres of it. Not all of it, I would say, we could utilize for programs, but it would be great open space. And we also kind of looked at the big picture of, you could turn it into sports fields, you could utilize it as the disc golf. You could utilize it as a camp space in the long term. So, there's just different uses for it all year, as well as great event space, so there is a lot of opportunity with it.
So, what committee is that into, so it's the town council that would decide if they're gonna purchase that, correct, Erica?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure, you know, you're on open space, you probably know what the budget is remaining in open space. I'm guessing-
Not enough to cover that.
Yeah. So, so there's kind of a twofold problem in that we wouldn't have enough money in open space. When money is used from the open space fund, it has to remain a passive recreation space, so that-
Passive and active, it can be either one. We had it, well, the, when we talked about it, it was both.
Okay, we'd have, yeah, we'd have to get clarification, because my understanding, you probably know better, being on the open space task force, but we'd have to get clarification on that. But when you go over a certain amount, we're looking at going to referendum. So, that would be where the funding would have to come from in this case.
Can make a place for school projects and tap into the Board of Ed budget. Molly, your report?
Yeah, so in terms of things going on at the Parks and Rec Department, so right now, we do have a mask mandate in the town. So, we're requiring everyone to wear masks when they're inside our spaces. And in terms of before and after school, it also impacts that in any of our programs, so they have to be wearing masks at all times. And it just came out as well that sports, when they're inside, that they must be wearing masks regardless of vaccination status when they are inside.
Do we have any data, how's it going? Are people being COVID-free because of the masks, or are people still getting it, or?
I mean, we have not had any reports recently of any COVID cases in our programs, so that's a positive. I'm unsure if it's whether or not it's due to us being safe, or if people are getting tested or not. I'm not exactly positive on it, but it seems to be going well. Everyone's respectful. We haven't really gotten any negative feedback from families. Because, you know, we're approaching it that we're just trying to keep their children safe.
Right. Is the staff all vaccinated?
I cannot answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. And other updates, our Crosstown Trail, we're still working on, you know, the design of it. So, Kevin from Anchor, he's been chatting more with Eversource. So, basically, the last couple of weeks, he's been chatting with Eversource about their existing hall roads and structures, their water courses and adjacent land that we want to use along the corridor. And we have to work on walking through that last part of the trail still. The thing that's holding us up currently is the partnership with Eversource. They've been kind of a little bit slow moving on approving parts of the plan. So, we're kind of waiting to hear back from them, and we're hoping within the next few weeks, we can sit down with Eversource and Walkin Wheelways and move forward with the Crosstown Trail project. So, not too many updates on that. In terms of the 2020, 2021 capital projects, so we received $60,000 from Rotary on October 6th. They presented us a check at an event that they hosted. And that was nice, so that helped out. As we took 170 from special revenue fund, we weren't able to obviously really utilize the Showmobile much. We were only able to use it on that last concert at the end of August. But we also had it at like the 175th anniversary and at the Whopping Fair. They rented it out for those two events. And then we do hopefully have some rental secured for the spring in terms of community, like town events. So, that's when it will be utilized coming up. In terms of VMP, we did the 50,000 for the design engineering. We have worked with TLB Architect, and they came and did a site visit originally in July, and they finished the project the end of August in terms of surveying the land and kind of looking at the pool and taking tests out of the gutters. But we have not received like the final steps and the final report of the project yet, so they said they will be getting it to us by the end of the month. So, that will kind of help us understand the lifespan and what the projected cost would be to fix the pool. And then for the Whopping tennis courts, the redesign engineering, we also worked with Kevin Grindel from Anchor. And they just did the site visit at the um beginning of August, and they are handing um sending out our site plans by midfall. He actually just had a baby, so he's been out for a few weeks, so a couple of the stuff on the projects haven't come in yet. We're excited for him. That'll be good. For the pickleball courts and deck hockey, I previously mentioned a little bit before, we finished the demolition, and then we worked with design professionals to create layouts of the courts, and we wanna go out to RFP for portions of the constructions. But again, the boards and the post engine concrete, those are some factors that we do need to consider. So we have not moved forward with completing the RFP yet. We aren't really in a rush necessarily to complete the RFP as we do have some time um before we will be constructing.
Have you given any thought of how you're gonna manage that? Like who goes on and?
Yeah, so in terms of pickleball, they will, they have like the league pretty much through the senior center that manages the league. Um, but they go on every single morning to any of the pickleball courts that we already have in town. So they utilize that every morning, so we plan on allowing them to utilize that facility on weekday mornings. And then after that, we wanna look into putting into place, whether it's a pickleball league for in the afternoons, um and like deck hockey leagues in the afternoon.
But not even the league, if somebody from the town wants to go and play, do they need to, how do they get on?
Uh, we have not firm that up yet, but since it is like a public space, we, I mean, we'll plan to let them utilize it if there is no scheduled things, kind of just like our tennis courts. That's what we discussed. Um, and like the, for the deck hockey side of it, we've like discussed with soccer about how they could utilize it if it was like kind of raining wet fields, so that way they could still practice and things like that. Um, John is not here this evening, so for in terms of park updates, um we filled that in on our last monthly report. Essentially, the Parks Crew has been working hard to continue to maintain all the Board of Ed facilities while the athletic fields. And they've been continuing tree work through the end of the summer and into the fall. There was a lot of trees that were down. Um, but they've been really just working on the Board of Ed facilities, our athletic facilities, um tree work, and they've also been doing a lot of field maintenance. The rain also really did hurt us this past like summer, so unfortunately, a lot of things were running a little bit behind because we couldn't do a lot of the work, so.
Molly, I just wanna go back to the comment I had on the on the courts. You may wanna have some sort of signage, that's just, that's a nightmare waiting to happen where somebody from the town is playing, and somebody goes, ah, you gotta get off, I got the court. I mean, that's gonna be ugly.
Right, yep.
And so some sort of signage that says that you do have to sign up with Parks and Rec, or there are schedules that will, may have to kick you off, something that gives somebody a heads up that they possibly be removed, you know, if there's a league coming in. I mean, I, just think about it, I just, that's a fight waiting to happen.
That is correct, probably, that's a good idea. Um, so yeah, with Parks, they've been doing a really great job. They did some awesome fall decorating around town as well. And then we were getting ready for the leaf season, so the Parks Crew will be very busy. And then I kind of put in some program updates essentially, kind of from the summer as we didn't meet in September. Kind of just talking about our ABCD awards and our summer concert series. For those of you who did not go to our ABCD awards, we had Billy Mitchell was our, one of our winners for that. And then we also had Alana, I'm not gonna be able to say the last names now, Alana Sepatelli, Linda Ciarcia, Julia Martaccio, Teresa Toomey, I don't know, Toomey, yep, and then South Windsor Walking Wheelways, so they all won the ABCD awards this summer, which was nice. And then our farmer's market, we did end up finishing that on September eleventh. We had over seven hundred people attend the last couple of markets, which was fantastic. So the last couple of markets, we had um a huge turnout, and we're kind of hoping that that will kick off for next year, kind of having that big following. We are doing a small four-week pop-up winter market at Whopping, um starting November thirteenth. So I'll be doing it for four weeks. They're gonna be featuring some winter stuff, so like Christmas trees, wreaths, um just highlighting local businesses. So it's good. Summer camp, so our total revenue for camp this season was um two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. So that was our revenue at the end of the season.
That's gross. What was the net?
I did not write that down, so I, that is, you're correct, that is, that's gross.
It seems good, but if it cost us two hundred and thirty, then it's not good.
Correct.
We've had that conversation in the past about the pool being net zero type of conversation.
The pool, yeah, essentially the pool is, yes, yep. Um, with camp though, we had just under um two thousand campers. We had one thousand five hundred and thirty-five, which was fantastic considering with COVID, our numbers had to be reduced slightly. Um, and then for athletic specialty camps, we had three hundred youth. So we served, overall, we served almost two thousand youth in just those two program, like the camps. And then we also had um our youth specialty camps that service a hundred and ninety-five youth. So we did make an impact on the youth this summer, which I think again is fantastic considering COVID did put kind of a blimp in all of our plans and our typical program offerings. The kids had a great time, and we had a successful summer. We had a lot of positive feedback coming through from our camp staff and our camp team. They worked exceptionally hard every single day to make it a normal experience. So I do wanna say, you know, that they did a fantastic job, and thank you to them, you know, without them, we wouldn't have had a successful summer. In terms of youth athletics, we have a lot going on. Um, currently, we have fall tennis lessons. We have um basketball that'll be starting up soon. We had the adult volleyball league start at the end of September as well. And because of our influx typically for youth basketball, we actually had um a new kind of athletic supervisor start, so he is going to be working part-time helping our recreation supervisor Ashley oversee basketball and make sure the operations go smoothly, cause they literally run every single day, um every single night. And then every day is like, um Saturdays, for example, are nine AM to ten PM, which is quite a big day. So we wanna make sure that we have adequate staffing for that.
How's your staffing been going? Are you staying fully staffed? How's your recruiting going?
Yeah, so I mean, we are pretty much fully staffed. Fourth R is experiencing um some staffing problems in terms of even recruiting. Uh, Shelby's been doing a fantastic job to make sure that we can get adequate staff, but at the same time, you know, the amount of people applying is really what's hindering us in terms of program growth.
That's actually, you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I think everyone's kind of dealing with that in terms of staffing. Um, some other highlights, again, it's not the net profit for the pool, but around two hundred and twenty-seven thousand for that as well. Our net is close to zero, correct, but.
It's okay.
Yeah.
It's your beach is owing money.
Exactly. Um, but throughout, you know, throughout the season, we were one of the few pools that were fully staffed and were able to certify twenty-five new lifeguards and four new swim instructors, which will help us out for the next summer season. And then swim lessons, we had about four hundred participants in group lessons and about a hundred and forty in private lessons.
Sorry, Molly, um i- within that two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, is there maintenance included in that? Like, do you build in stuff that you have to repair? Is that all in there or is that over and above?
That is all in there, yeah.
Molly, I had a question on the um, with the advent of the new schools and the new designs. Is it still the policy when the school is closed during the day for a teacher conference or something of that nature? Is access to the gym still denied to those teams to practice or play on a day when uh the school is not open during the daytime hours?
I have honestly not heard that we weren't allowed access into the schools when they were not in there. Um, we've programmed like we typically do. Again, I'm new, so I guess we haven't run into that maybe yet, um but we have not.
Traditionally, uh, the school would close, the gym would close, but uh with the new schools and the new designs, if the school was closed, many had the impression that the gyms would still be open to those who uh wanted to use them at night, and they would not be denied access for the additional tax dollars now being put forth to support these schools. They wanted use of these gyms.
I mean, I do believe that we're doing um programming at night in the gyms. So um I do think that because of the new designs, that we'll be able to utilize the gyms even when they're closed. Cause again, basketball is running at pretty much all hours, and if we weren't able to get into the school, that would really kind of prohibit who we can schedule and how many teams we could have in the leagues. Cause I mean, they do have quite a bit of professional days or um school vacations during our season.
Would you please get specific clarification on that?
Yeah.
Thanks. Good, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, for up, for other updates, really, we have um a few new wellness programs that we're offering. It's a virtual fusion yoga, and then we're also doing some creative cardio programs, uh Jukito. So we're kind of just keeping up with our in-person and our virtual programs. And people are interested in hybrid more now than ever in terms of exercising, as sometimes I feel like people think it's easier to just work out at their house, which it probably is. So we've seen more participants sign up for that option as well. But we will be continuing to offer classes throughout the fall and winter, in-person and virtual. Besides that, um for Fourth R, we have just under three hundred registered for the program, and they're currently taking names off the waitlist um as they become available. So Shelby has been making calls every single day pretty much. Whenever a spot opens up, she'll make a call and take a kid off the waitlist. Obviously, that's um prohibitive if we don't have the staffing or if, you know, COVID protocols do change. But we are working on that, so we do expect to have a higher number by November. And then in preschool, we're pretty much full across all of our classes. Um, we have two hundred and ninety youth enrolled in our preschool for the fall classes. And we expanded the offering, so with COVID, they shrank some of the options because we couldn't service all of the youth. But now we have more parent-child options, um and we have um two, more two-year-old and three-to-five-year-old classes.
I I assume that the the prices have gone up, but the, didn't we have an increase in minimum wage? And so everything went up appropriately?
Yes, it did, yes. Um, and then my first mud run, we had a mud run event on September nineteenth at Rice Street Park. We had four hundred participants attend the event. It was um just a two-mile course that had twelve obstacles, but everyone loved it. Um, it was pretty awesome to see they had a mud pit at the end and the kids were running through it and stuff. But it was families of all ages. It was nice. So four hundred people, um, you know, it was a good family event, so we plan to do it next year around the same time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it.
And besides that, I mean, yeah, we're about seventeen point four eight percent for our budget goal for the year. Um, I updated the number since I printed it out because we put in another deposit today. So I did update the number. Our new um, our new total that we're at right now is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, not two hundred and fifty thousand. So I updated that this afternoon, so we're just under twenty percent of our budget goal for the fiscal year, which does not seem very high, but it is compared to this time last year. So we were only at fifteen percent this time last year, so it's slightly higher.
Nice job.
And then the American Rescue Act funding, um we were awarded to do um the water safety program, which our aquatics supervisor Nancy is working on to roll out um aquatic safety in the schools and the before and after school programs in the spring, and that's gonna relay into us offering reduced fee kind of safety classes throughout the summer for aquatics. We're not sure exactly what that's gonna look like yet. We're still in the planning stages for it. Um, the youth behavioral counselor, that's gonna be more of a summer position. We're still in the working phases of that as well. We haven't really discussed much on it, but we do have a funding position for a staff to come in who has either a social work background, guidance counselor background, et cetera, and they'll be coming in to support um our camp staff this summer, and then um depending on what the need is, and they could stay on for that next summer or they could be helping out on other programs. And then our exercise trail, we actually um just got a couple of quotes from different companies. Greenfields is one of the companies that kind of offers a lot of different diverse exercise trail options. So they do fully adaptive equipment, which I think is fantastic, and so we're looking at a couple of different locations. So instead of just a traditional trail, our thought was to kind of take out all of the broken pieces along the trail. We wanna revamp that anyways, um so that would be one phase of it. And then another phase for this next piece would be to kind of put fitness equipment all in an accessible spot, so that way, no matter your ability, you can come and you can do some workouts and utilize the equipment. And then further down the line, whether it's next spring or summer, we put in some more stuff along the fitness trail, more so for stretching and for um low impact, because the trail isn't really utilized for working out at this current moment, and the equipment that we have out there isn't really the safest option for people to be utilizing. So we wanna work on revamping that piece.
So to back up to Sam, the the youth behavior counselor, what's that hundred and twenty thousand for?
That would be just to fund them, like fund their position for, it's not, it's for a couple of years. And it's not for just for that, but it's also for like supplies and for um some of the other like therapy methods that might need. So I've been working with um Liz over at Youth and Family Services. We've been chatting about how they could mainstream with that as well and send over referrals, um and then we kind of have to see. We haven't really talked about it since last summer in terms of how that would look and how we're gonna integrate them. We don't know their hours yet, so that's just an estimated number. So honestly, we could spend less than that.
Molly, question with the uh rise in the um minimum wage and the labor shortages. Are you adequately staffed right now in your park and rec department? Are there any open positions? And are you satisfying your needs on straight hours rather than overtime?
Yeah, so we do have um an opening in the Parks Department right now for a maintainer one position, and we also have a groundskeeper position open, um so that is a position that we're looking to fill. But that, that will hopefully, you know, we're hoping that'll be filled by November. So the Parks Department is in need of a few staff. Um, and fortunately, we have had to utilize a lot of overtime within the Parks Department, but that was because of all of the weather and everything that we have had, and then also we've had an enormous amount of community events that needed extra um park hand, so we've had to overtime staff the Parks Crew. So that is one piece that we still need to work on for when we're looking at next budget year. And then park um recreation side, on our full-time staff team, we're all set. I mean, we're fully staffed and everyone's been working their normal hours, and they're not um having to do too much extra because we do have pretty adequate staffing. I mean, our preschool is doing well on numbers for staffing. Most of our programs, just Fourth R, obviously, they're looking for a couple more before and after school program staff. Um, and then in terms of basketball, I do know that they need quite a bit for like the younger coaches. But it's so it's like the, it's the jobs that have minimal hours that we're really looking for. And that's kind of, I think that's been a problem along a lot of the youth development positions right now. It's something that I guess everyone has really been dealing with, which is unfortunate. Um, but you know, the other avenue is looking for, for example, for basketball is um volunteer coaches when we can.
Would you say you're challenged more by the weather conditions upon which we had to experience this year? Or is it the school population and the additional students now in these schools?
Honestly, the weather. Um, I wouldn't say it has really, the school population really hasn't had much impact on us um in terms of our programming um at this current moment. It might impact us in a few years. Um, as, I mean, as everyone knows, there's a childcare need in the town and in most towns, and as the town grows. And as the town grows, we're going to obviously find more of a need for it. But all the rest of our programs have been adequate with our numbers.
Thank you.
And then the last piece that I had to slip in was the volunteering for the Halloween Hallow Blue. So if anyone is free on... It's not this Saturday, but it's next Saturday, so...
Can we wear costumes?
You can wear costumes. Cheryl was... Cheryl wanted me to slip the advertisement in, so I'm going to slip that in.
Good, well done.
I did it two years ago. It was fun. And last year, we did the thing along the high school. That was fun, too.
So if anyone would like to do that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Molly.
Yeah, thank you.
Are they doing that pumpkin roll?
We are. So yes, the pumpkin roll is this Friday at Porter's Hill. So if you're interested, I believe we're starting it at 5:30. 5:30, yeah. I was going to say, right? I always like to carry. I was like, it's 5:00 or 5:30, but it's 5:30, and it's going to be at Porter's Hill.
Thank you. That being over, are there any... I didn't have anything on the agenda for discussion topics that is... Okay, seeing none. Any other business whatsoever? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I'd second that.
If any motion has been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for being here tonight.